Clerks, can you please determine whether we have a quorum? Clerk, can you please determine whether we have a quorum?
Senator Burnett. Senator Burnett. Senator Blas. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher. Senator Lujan. Senator Lujan. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson. Senator Perez. Senator Perez. Senator Canata. Senator Canata. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton. Senator Titeguy. Senator Titeguy. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi. Madam Speaker, there is no quorum. Madam Speaker, there is no quorum.
There's no quorum, so we will stand in recess and for about 10 more minutes and we'll check again whether we have recess. There's no quorum, so we will stand in recess and for about 10 more minutes and we'll check again whether we have recess. Thank you, Senator. We're back from recess. Colleagues, we're on second reading. We are now on bill number 36-37 COR. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to place bill number 36-37 COR to the bottom of the file.
Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on bill number 42-37 COR. Senator Burnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I moved to place bill 42-37 COR as amended by the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts on the third reading phone. I'd also like to discuss the measure.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's a very simple measure that I would ask my colleagues to please support. And it's one of those measures that I was surprised we didn't already have in place. Simply, this bill would require the availability of AEDs, or Automated External Defibrillators, on all school campuses of the Guam Department of Education by June 30th of next year. And the bill was spurred, inspired by a national incident. I don't know if we have any Buffalo Bills fans in here, but there's an incident with Buffalo Bill's safety, Damar Hamlin. Ooh, scared me. Bless you. Bless you, Senator Shelton. And anyway, due to the presence of the AEDs, this, he was able to live, and that's really what it's about. The measure saw overwhelming support during the public hearing. And again, it's just one of those things. You know, the gym I go to, and even a lot of government offices that you kind of go into to do errands or pay bills, you'll see these AEDs prominently displayed in the event of any kind of emergency. And so, again, when I looked at whether or not this was required in our, in our public schools, I was surprised to see that it was not. And now I'm here to offer this bill that, again, I, I hope my colleagues will find it in their hearts to support, Madam Speaker. There's really not much else to say. Like I said, it's a very simple measure, and I, again, ask my colleagues for their generous support of this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill. Senator Titeguy, you are recognized on the bill.
Situs Maasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of bill 42-37. I was there at the public hearing. I did have some concerns, though. You know, of course, the cost of these, of these defibrillators to, to the schools, or how many it's going to, you know, affect on DOE. And then I was told that, and if, if I can, Madam Speaker, would like to, the author of the legislation, to confirm that these defibrillators, the cost per school for these defibrillators, and does DOE have those, that funding for it?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, ma'am, I will. Unfortunately, we don't have an exact figure as to how much these AEDs will cost. I know that the Guam Department of Education is doing the math on that, and, you know, we don't line item fund for Tylenol or other things that are necessary to run a school, and that's why we're mandating the placement of these AEDs. And, you know, when DOE does the math and they come back with a figure, we'll be more than happy to provide the funding. But that being said, they do have an enormous amount of funding available to them, and so I hope that satisfies the asker of the question, ma'am.
Senator Titeguy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the good author for answering my question. Greatly appreciated. I think it was around 800 per, per unit for each defibrillator, and, and it's definitely needed. But one of the other questions that I brought to the floor or during public hearing was the Good Samaritan law, wondering if we actually had one on Guam. I asked a couple people who were well-versed on the Guam Code Annotated, and they, they really couldn't answer me, so did some research and found out that there is a Good Samaritan law. And the reason why this, you know, I think is very important is that you have teachers who are working there and, and at these schools, along with the other employees of the schools, and some of them are kind of hesitant to even touch anybody who's in trouble because they might get sued. So I just wanted to, you know, clarify, there is a Good Samaritan law in place. In fact, it's Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 20, Section 2, 2104, persons rendering emergency assistance exempt from civil liability. It says, "Any person who renders emergency care assistance without compensation at the place of an emergency or accident shall not be liable for any civil damages resulting as an act or omission, except for such damages as may result from gross negligence or omissions." So I, I was really concerned about that, and, and I'm glad to know that we do have this on the, on the books. So that teachers won't hesitate to grab that defibrillator. The employees at DOE will not hesitate to grab the machine to help somebody who's in dire need. So, you know, I stand in full support of this bill and, and greatly appreciate if the, the sponsor of the bill include me as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Fisher, you are recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a question for the sponsor. And I rise to ask him that question, the question being the following: Section 3, Request for Appropriation. GDOE has to submit a request for appropriation to fund this no later than June 30th of 2023. Might I suggest that we give GDOE a little more lead time, and perhaps the sponsor would consider an amendment to bring that out to, say, July 30th, 2023? And I, I don't know if he will yield to that question.
Would you yield to the question? Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, I will, ma'am, and I thank the good senator from Epan for the question. I hate to say that. Might actually be a typo that may, may have, should have read June 30th, 2024, I believe, because, and, and to reference the Senator Titeguy had asked, and I slipped my mind, it's actually in the bill here on page 3, Section C, "GDOE shall annually request from the legislature additional funding or amendments to the law and a request for appropriation." So I'd be open to an amendment, or maybe I can cook one up, Senator Fisher, if you don't mind?
If you'd like to, Madam Speaker, if the sponsor would like to amend it here on the floor, that'd be fine.
He will have that opportunity when he closes on the bill. You, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I stand in support of this bill as well. I don't, I don't know if the sponsor was aware of it, but we had a budget hearing on the Department, Guam Fire Department, and I asked them about this bill, and they were fully in support of it. They said they definitely wanted to see this go through. And they also reminded me that the defibrillators that the fire department uses are not the same kind of defibrillator that are found in commercial establishments, that the ones that are found in commercial establishments are easy to be trained on, very easy to be trained on, and they are also easy to use. So I commend the author of the bill, and I do support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill. Anyone else on the bill? Senator Shelton?
Speaker Terlahi, you are recognized.
Thank you. I raise in support of the bill. A similar provision has been in Guam law for a while, authorizing the setup of, of these devices, Automated External Defibrillation devices since 2000, and, but I, I don't think that many public buildings have actually put them in. So by this bill, we are mandating that DOE shall do that as a requirement of adequate education, it looks like. And so I support that. And, I think it's consistent with one of the laws that we passed last term to have licensed paramedics also on Guam. So we expanded our EMS capabilities so that we have licensed paramedics, and we have this continuum of care from site of incident responders all the way to the hospital's ER. And so the testimony at the hearing was that the types of defibrillators they're thinking to put into DOE are going to be used by, it looks like anyone, that according to DOE, supposed to give us rules and regs, and they will determine who gets to use it or who will be trained in it, but according to the testimony by their nurse, that they are able, they are going to be able to train the laypeople in the schools. I too share the concern of one of the previous speakers, my colleague from Timuining, that, you know, we want to make sure that, that they are encouraged to use these without liability. So of course, the Government Claims Act limits liabilities in school, schools' actions or school administrations' actions, but because there are other people on the campus, parents. The, these are intended, according to the bill, to be used during extracurricular activities, sports events, and, and any time, and be available at any time that the school campus is being used. So I, I would like to just add an amendment to be, like reiterate, what's very similar to what my previous colleague referred to as the Good Samaritan law, but this is the law that's placed into our auto, Public Access to Automated External Defibrillation Act of 2000. So this provision for tort immunity was provided in that act. If we put this into any government buildings, I'm just making amendment to repeat it again here, in particular for these AEDs that are being put into the schools. Immunity from civil liability for personal injury for those who are involved in using these in a good faith. So that, my amendment's been passed out. Just to add a new section, 7117.1.
Thank you, Speaker. On the amendment, Senator Titeguy, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, you know, I think the, the good author of this amendment, who was also, had that same concerns I did on the Good Samaritan law, but, you know, as I read, I was reading this, I don't know if you're adding more to it or make it more restrictive when the law that's already on the books right now is less restrictive. I mean, it's, it's just one paragraph that simply says, "Any person who renders emergency care assistance without compensation at the place of an emergency or accident shall not be liable for any civil damage resulting as an act or omission, except for such damages as may result from gross negligence or wanton omissions." I mean, that, that covers everything, you know, but now, now what we're doing here is we're providing, providing additional wording that, that may just, you know, be unnecessary to do. Sometimes laws that, that are passed, and, and when someone is trying to read and comprehend the law, they, they find another law in another section of the Guam Code Annotated, and it doesn't jive with each other, you know? And then now it comes into question. I do believe that this particular amendment will not really provide too much of a, you know, debate back and forth of what exactly did you mean? I mean, you're, you're sticking strictly to the defibrillators. Nothing here in the amendment takes away from the current law in the Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 20, Section 2104. I just would like the good author of the amendment, you know, answer the question whether this is really starting to be more restrictive and instead of broader, like the current law that's on the books right now? Or is the intention just to discuss the defibrillator?
Do you yield to the question, Speaker?
Sure, and thank you for the question. Not meaning to take away from the Good Samaritan law, normally these Good Samaritan laws, I don't have that provision in front of me that she's referring to, but normally Good Samaritan laws apply to physicians who are also acting in their capacity, being, being at a certain place, or medical professionals. But when they pass the Automated External Defibrillation Act, allowing these to be put into public facilities, that they specifically provided that immunity would be granted to non-medical personnel. The person who provides the CPR and the AED training, so even the trainers, and also the person or entities responsible for the site where the AEDs located, so even the principals, for example, or the athletic directors, that's in Section, subsection B of my proposed amendment. I think that's what distinguishes it, is it extends beyond just the person using it, because sometimes in lawsuits, they want to bring in other people where they can find the money. And so it extends to the training and to the, the site that has the defibrillator in it. I hope that answers the question.
Does that satisfy your question, Senator Titeguy?
Thank you to the author of the amendment for answering my question. And, you know, as I mentioned, it's in Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 20, Section 2, 2104, and, and even in that section on the Good Samaritan law, it doesn't, you know, talk about certain professionals, and, you know, doctors, or nurses, or firefighters, or anybody like that. It, it's pretty broad. But, you know, as long as there's no confusion between the two laws, because you're going to have two, two examples of, you know, tort immunity on the books. But I thank you for the opportunity to just get some answers and to ensure that this will not contradict each other as we discuss the law further down the road for any other reason. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment. On the Terlahi amendment. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections. Want to close? Hearing no objections, amendment passes. Speaker Terlahi, you are still recognized.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to clarify one more time the earlier discussion regarding the date. So the bill, according to subsection B, says that this access to the defibrillators on campuses shall be made or completed by DOE by June 30, 2024, which is about a year from now. So prior to the opening of next school year, these should be in place. We talked about the costs, and I guess, since they have a year to install these, this upcoming budget might be able to cover this, but, but on Section 3 of the bill, if, if the sponsor would yield, it says that they will submit a request for appropriation no later than June 30, 2023, which is in a few days. We have a fiscal note that talks about the cost according to the fiscal. According to the fiscal note, they got this cost from DOE and it, it just lays out what somebody estimated the cost to be. I don't think any procurement has actually taken place, for real. So I just want to know if, if, and then it says that DOE is going to annually request additional funding or amendments to the law. And I want to know if that's necessary or if they would be able to cover this from their existing budgets. It looks to me like $100,000 total, if that's correct, if the sponsor would yield.
Senator Barnett, do you yield to the question?
Could the Speaker restate the question, please? I'm sorry.
So the mandate is that these be installed by June 30, 2024, which is so a year from now, no problem, but that they must submit their request no later than June 30, which is just in a couple of days, 2023. And then it says that they shall submitted requests annually for this, and I'm just wondering if it's anticipated that they would just be able to fit this into their regular budget or if this is some extraordinary cost item that needs to be line itemed in the budgets.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that question. I do have an amendment coming. I just want to strike out the, after the word "Act" in Section 3, I would just strike out "no later than June 30, 2023." And you're right, I don't know why they would annually request funding from us for things that they've already received. And I don't believe that it's a cost so enormous that it warrants extra funding. I, I believe they can cover it within their budget, ma'am. I hope that satisfies the asker of the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker?
No further questions. And I support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. On the bill.
If there's no one else to speak on the bill, the sponsor may close on the bill.
Ma'am, can I ask for a moment's recess while they pass out the amendment unless it's already being passed out?
All right. It's being passed out right now.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, again, really not much to say. It's a very simple bill that I, I think actually could save lives. And so we'll just ask again for my colleagues' support. We're passing on an amendment now and that would amend Section 3 of the bill and it would strike, one, two, three, four, five, the last six words of Line 14. And so it would read, "The Guam Department of Education shall submit a request for appropriation to Hiles, La Torre and Guahan to fund Section 2 of this act." Period. Thank you. And I want to thank everybody who spoke in support of the bill. And again, I asked my colleagues to please help us pass this measure. Si do smasi.
All right. So on the amendment, on the amendment, Line 16, Page 3, is there any objection or anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Anyone who would like to speak? Senator Fisher, on the amendment.
Thank you, ma'am. If I could ask the sponsor a question about the amendment?
Yeah, please state your question.
Thank you. In the event that the Department of Education doesn't do it, what would be the effect in your, in the sponsor's opinion on the bill as a whole?
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
When I say "do it," I mean submit a cost.
Can you ask the Speaker to, the asker of the question to please elaborate on, on what he means if they didn't do it? Thank you.
Senator Fisher?
Yes, thank you very much for that. As I was saying, when they didn't do it, it means if they don't fulfill the requirements of that section, is it 3? Section 3, does that mean that there will be no defibrillators?
Do you mean if they don't submit a request or they do not install? It's, sorry. Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Well, I, I'm not really much of an assumption person, but I would just assume that if they don't submit it, that they're going to use it out of the money that they have in the bank. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Could you please repeat that, Senator? Senator Barnett?
Thank you. I would, so you're saying if they don't submit a request for appropriation to the legislature to fund Section 2, what would happen?
Yeah. Madam Speaker, the thrust of the question is because it reads, GDE shall submit a request for appropriation, because it's part of the same bill. If they don't request an appropriation for these, does that mean there will be? In other words, is this going to be a, at, at the Department of Education's desire? So they don't submit a request for money? Does that mean it's dead?
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I would. Well, the, the bill itself mandates the placement of AEDs at the school facilities. And so, again, I would just assume if they don't ask us for the appropriation, then that would mean that they have found money in the bank to pay for it. And if, if they don't end up asking for it, then I'll call them and say, hey, why didn't you ask for it? Do you need money and how much? Thank you. I hope that satisfies the question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. On the bill. Wait, I'm sorry. We were on closing and you made an amendment? We were on the amendment. On the amendment. On the amendment? Yes, please state your point of inquiry.
No amendment, but point of inquiry to the author. Commend the author for this legislation. I think it's a very valid initiative and it's obviously a necessity and life-saving device. So with that being said, I, I would think that it's prudent for our body to also authorize for other government agencies and other government facilities to procure such items so that we can also ensure that, you know, any respective government facility has that available and ready to act at, at the certain time. But I understand it's only for DOE facilities? Oh, can, can the author yield to that or can we add to that?
Would the author yield to the question?
Ma'am, could, I'm sorry, because it was, can, can the Speaker restate the question? My apologies.
Senator Barnett, point of inquiry, I just wanted to find out why we only are, are itemizing specifically DOE. Understood that there are plenty kids there, but other government facilities as well as ourselves, we do not have AED available. The governor's office doesn't have AED. So I would think that it's very prudent of our body to ensure and procure for all government facilities and agencies so that it's readily available to all the people and personnel at a moment's notice.
Would the sponsor yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I actually agree with my good colleague from, Jigo, the Jigalo from Jigo. And yeah, I, I'm open to any type of amendment and the reason why I only mandated it in the Guam Department of Education schools as well, first of all, because I have oversight of GDOE. And second of all, in thinking of the kids, I thought, oh, this is something, again, that I felt there was a, a gap in care that I wanted to close. But I would support AEDs at the University of Guam, the Guam Community College and government-wide. And, and just a point of information on the funding, I don't know specifically the funding source, but I do believe that there are federal funds available for placing AEDs in, in government facilities. And so, yeah, I would support placing AEDs. I'm not sure if there's an amendment being proffered or anything, but it does sound like a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Canata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess, can I ask for a moment's recess and then we'll make amendment? Senator Tello is asking if it's germane.
Yeah, I don't think so. We'll take one minute recess. Senator Canata, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I'll withdraw that amendment and I'll work with the author on an additional policy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so we're, reminder, we're on an amendment to Section 3 of the bill and the author has been closing on the bill. So any further comments on this amendment or the bill? Has to be done right now. Anyone else wants to speak on this amendment? Senator Sinagastin here, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On, on the, on the amendment, even if you had left it at June 30th, it wouldn't matter because on July 17th, we'll be hearing the, the budget on DOE. And if that's brought up during the budget hearing, then, then we'll address it then. Because maybe whenever they submit it, July 17th is going to be the key and Senator Barnett is aware of that, that the budget hearing for DOE is going to happen. If he makes that, that statement and get DOE to come over the cost, then we incorporate in their budget and we figure that out from there. Regardless if it was June 30th or not, we would deal with it in the budget. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I, I do rise in support of the bill.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. On the amendment, Senator Luhon?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it's not on the amendment, but it's a point of inquiry to the, to the author?
Please state your point of inquiry.
You know, where, where it says the AEDs shall be provided during school hours, school sporting events and school activities. Do school activities include activities outside of the school? Do they have to have a, a portable defibrillator wherever they go? They have field trips? They have senior trips that they go off island and things of that nature? Sporting events? I know in contact sports, there are field events. I know there are ambulances, or the ambulance is, is there. But in some, some sporting events, the ambulance is not there. So do they need a, would they be required to, to have a portable defibrillator with them as well? Because it says, you know, the, the premises, but also available during school hours, school sporting events and school activities. And school activities and sporting events are just not confined to building-wise, they're in fields, either their field, some other field, or fields outside of, of school and activities outside of school, field trips and things of that nature. So that could prevent them from having activities outside if they don't have, if could be translated that a, a portable defibrillator is not with them or trained personnel in the use of a defibrillator. So that's my question to the, to the author.
Would the author yield to that question?
Yes, ma'am. Good catch. I mean, would, would the, a good senator like me to draft an amendment to cover that? Because we could come up with something that says to include off-campus field trips.
Of that nature, you know, Senator Barnett, because, you know, I don't want them to use this as an excuse that they can't go.
Can't go to the movies because of Senator Barnett? We didn't pack an AED.
Senator Barnett does not allow us to go, yeah, because we have to have this. And, you know, I mean, I'm just saying because it's fixed in the building, but there are activities outside of the building. There are sporting events that do not have ambulance on, on, on site. They have senior trips and they go at, at times, the field trips and, and all that. And so that, you know, they can read it as, as such. We can't go because we don't have the personnel trained or a, a, a defibrillator with us. So, yeah.
Thank, thank you. That's a great catch. And could I get a, just a moment's recess, just to tweak that out a little bit?
One minute recess.
Thank you.
We're back from recess. Senator Luhon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I think the, I think the, the author had answered it. I think, speaking to the author, there are some federal guidelines that dictate to school campuses versus outside. So I think we're covered with this. I'm satisfied with the, with the author's response. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. On the amendment, sponsor, you may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. When do I add the cosponsors or do I close after? Thank you so much. Yeah, so I just close on the amendment and thank Senator Sinagastin for his support to push through the funding for this in a expedited manner. And so, yeah, that's it. I'm just closing on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
So on the amendment, is there any objection? Is there any objection on the amendment? Please raise your hand because I can't hear. If there's any objection on the amendment, raise your hand. If not, amendment passes. Closing on the bill, Senator Barnett?
Thank you. I'd like to thank my colleagues for their discussion and support of this measure. And I'd also like to open it up for any cosponsorships. I know that Senator Titigui had indicated that she would like to cosponsor. Senator Sinagastin? Senator Shelton? Senator Duñez? Senator Luhon? And Senator Nicholas? Anyone else? Senator Fisher? Senator Parkinson? Senator Canata also? Senator Frank? Senator Frank Blas? I think we have everybody, I want to say.
On the motion to add cosponsors, is there any objection? Clerk, do you have the motion? Do you have it? After the ones you named, you are asking that everyone else be included as well?
I was also asking if you would like to be included? Yep.
In the end, we'll all be included.
I know. Thank you.
Sure. So the clerk's asking, to make it clear. After the names that you listed, everybody else, including?
Yeah, did I forget anyone?
Yes. So is it everybody else to be included after? Yes. So is it everybody else to be included after that?
Yes, I would like everyone to be a cosponsor.
All right. So on that amendment to add the cosponsors in the order listed, and then everyone else, including me, is there any objection to that motion? No objection to the cosponsors. Further closing on the bill, Senator Barnett.
That's it. I just want to say thank you again to my colleagues.
All right.
And I would like to move it to the third reading file as amended on the floor.
On that motion to place bill number 42-37COR as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor to the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now continuing in second reading on bill number 44-37COR. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 44, it's an act to add a new subsection 7112D and 7112.2 of chapter seven, title 17 GCA, relative to creating the Safe School Facilities Act of 2023. It's a pretty simple bill. And again, it's just one of those measures where I would like to, I'm sorry, ma'am, let me just start over there. I'd like to motion to move bill 44-37 to the, to place it on the third reading file. I'd like to discuss it. Thank you.
All right. Did you read the title?
Yes, I can. An act to add a new subsection 712D and 7112.2 of chapter seven, title 17 GCA, relative to creating the Safe School Facilities Act of 2023.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Yes, bill 44, again, it's a measure that we proffered after visiting the different school campuses around the island this term. And what I found troublesome was when I had visited Southern High School, and this is something we've been reading about in the news lately because of the passage of the typhoon and the subsequent utilities, outages have affected this. But when I went to Southern High, I was shocked to see how widespread and prevalent mold infestation was at Southern High School. And it was even prevalent in classrooms that our public school students attend classes in. And it was just everywhere. And I know that perhaps the school community of Southern High might have been aware of this mold infestation. Maybe the students, because they go to this school, definitely the teachers and the staff. But I'm just not sure if the parents or the families of the students or the public at large had any idea just how bad it was. And then when I went to George Washington High School, I found out that they had actually closed off several classrooms due to the presence of asbestos. And if you've ever had to mitigate asbestos, basically, the way they mitigated in the short term is they encapsulate it, which is basically they cover it, right? But because of the foot traffic in and out of this classroom, which granted wasn't being used by the school administration to actually have classes in, but just because, I guess, of the traffic of people going in and out to assess whether any further damage had occurred, it had led to cracks in the encapsulation, which I believe posed a risk, you know, not just to the students and the staff at the school, but also to the maintenance folks who go in there and address these concerns, and to anybody who would happen to go into these classrooms. And when I started talking to people about the presence of asbestos at George Washington High School, they were shocked. They were surprised because we never knew about it. You know, same thing with Simon Sanchez High School. I was sent a lot of pictures of rodent infestation and just a bunch of different issues that have plagued that GGO campus for many, many years. And again, these findings are never made public. And so that's what this bill does, is it requires the superintendent to receive and retain reports of maintenance problems, facilities defects, structural problems, safety concerns, the presence of hazardous materials from students, faculty, school employees, parents, and other stakeholders. And then to make these notifications public, and also to not just identify them, but to remediate and mitigate facilities from any number of hazards and contaminants which are listed here in the bill. And to further develop a warning system to notify the public of areas of school property that may contain hazardous substances or infestations until that area is remediated. So for example, in the case of George Washington High School, they should have placed on the door some type of warning or notification that there was asbestos exposed and present in the class. And so again, it's a simple measure. Unfortunately, the Guam Department of Education, I think because the superintendent had been off island, didn't provide testimony on this bill. But we did have several board members who testified in favor of it. And a large part of the testimony at the public hearing was in support of this measure, because like I said, it's very simple. It's about transparency. It's about being truthful and coming forward and sharing the conditions in the schools with the very people that these conditions affect. And so with that being said, I would look forward to the discussion and debate, and hopefully the support of my colleagues to get this measured, this measure passed. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Titekwe, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There's no doubt that the typhoon has even made it even worse for our schools. And the damages that are caused from this latest storm has exasperated the issues that we have with our schools. As far as funding is concerned, that's going to grow as well. You know, I went to the public hearing, and as I was looking at this particular bill, I mean, I was looking for the BBMR's fiscal note for this bill. And it's saying that it's going to need some funding. Nobody from DOE showed up. Nobody came to show. And I was wondering, okay, well, maybe this bill is very similar to what public health is going to be doing when they do their inspections, when they go to the schools. So the first question I have to the author of the legislation is, are these reports pretty much similar to what public health is going to also provide to the schools in the event it doesn't pass muster?
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. I totally understand where the speaker is coming from. But I think one of the big differences, at least that I can tell offhand, is, for example, in the public health inspection of Southern High School, I read the inspection report. I've read all the inspection reports from the public health inspections that have been conducted at several of the campuses. And they don't address mold infestation. And so again, I think this bill, while it kind of falls in the same ballpark as to what public health does, it provides more instances and hazards for screening and mitigation for the Guam Department of Education to notify the public about. And I think public health, when they do their inspections, they're looking at things like the light covers and, you know, obviously, right? If there's roaches or rats, and also things about the distance of the doors from the floors. But I didn't really see a lot of, well, much of anything really about asbestos or any of these risks like chlorine gas or PCBs in any of these public health reports. So I think that it's a little bit of a departure from what public health does. But all again, in the vein of transparency and the Guam Department of Education are really not just listing these hazards and finding the remediation and the mitigation, but making that information available to the public, ma'am, which is something I don't see in kind of your run-of-the-mill, routine public health inspection reports. I hope that satisfies the question. Thank you.
Senator Titekwe.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I thank you for answering my question. You know, I was kind of concerned because, you know, I don't think there are people over at DOE that are, you know, have the professionalism with knowing what toxicity is, allergens originally, and flora, contamination hazards. So it's definitely not going to be anybody doing these reports from DOE. Because it sounds to me like these reports are going to have to be done by someone who has a background, a biological background, an environmental background. So then it takes you to section two of the bill. And it clearly states, "The superintendent shall receive and retain any reports of including, but not limited to, maintenance problems, facilities deficits, structural problems, safety concerns, and the presence of hazardous material from students, faculty, school employees, parents, and other stakeholders." Copies of such reports shall be included with any procurement solicitation for services described in paragraph A." So it's clear, this bill is going to allow DOE to go out and procure people who have the background in environmental and biological, you know, contamination and all these other areas that public health does not cover. So, you know, there is a cost associated with it. So my question to the author, if he should yield, how much is that going to cost?
Would the sponsor yield to the question? How much will that cost?
To provide on the section on, it's okay, I know you were talking to someone, Senator, so let me just let you know what the question was. Section two, it's obvious that the information that's going to be needed is not going to come from DOE employees. It's going to come from people who have, you know, the background in these areas like, you know, chemistry and microbiology, et cetera, down the line. So, but there is a section, "Copies of such reports shall be included with any procurement solicitation for services described in the paragraph A." So that's obvious that this is going to cost, because we need to have people come out there and start doing these reports. So my question is, how much is this going to cost?
Thank you.
Would the sponsor yield?
Sure. Honestly, we won't know how much it's going to cost until we assess all the issues. But I will say for the mold, which was in existence before the passage of Typhoon Moir and has only multiplied, I want to say tenfold since the typhoon's passage, we've heard estimates around $13 million to mitigate that mold. And yes, well, I understand that, you know, the GDOE school aide or the GDOE maintenance person might not be a chemist, or a biologist, or a pathologist, or an expert in what type of mold does what. I think the intent is, if you see something, you say something. So if you see, for example, mold in a classroom, you would then notify your manager. And then they take it up to the superintendent. And then the superintendent hopefully engages Guam EPA or public health to conduct any type of further assessment that's outside the realm of expertise. So, yeah, I think as we go through and identify a lot of these hazards at the school, and it could be something as simple as identifying a mold, and, oh, there's mold everywhere. And then you bring someone in for a further assessment, and then you find out, oh, it's this type of mold which does that. But, yeah, I think as we go into the schools and we find these hazards, then we get a better idea of exactly how much they're going to cost to mitigate. And I hope that satisfies the asker of the question. Thank you.
Senator Titekwe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Senator, for the answer. But, you know, I think you were just skating because it didn't tell us the price. I mean, we're putting legislation truth to this body. We should at least know how much it's going to cost, this government, how much it's going to cost the taxpayers of this island. It's almost like an unfunded mandate. And this is what we don't want to start doing. Everybody here wants to make sure. I mean, we've been behind the good author of this legislation on roundtables, on other bills, and rallied behind him to have safer schools for our children. Not just our children, but the employees, our teachers as well, the administration of these schools. We all want that safe safety mechanism in place. But there, if you look at section two, "The superintendent shall receive and retain any reports of including." And then if you go further down, it says, "Copies of such reports shall be included with any procurement solicitation," explains all these shalls. But like I said, during the public hearing, DOE was not present to even give us a ballpark on how much this is going to cost. The only good thing about this is that the majority of reports here will actually come from public health. I mean, we talk about the teachers not being able to have, you know, bias security, you know, level, or, you know, have these other toxicities. What is it, experience to do that? Well, I don't think the superintendent of Guam is going to also have a requirement to also have a biological degree being a superintendent as well. He's going to need help. But we keep putting these bills on with no funding. That's a big issue. But the bigger issue is, not only does it have no funding, we don't even know how much it's going to come, I mean, not even a ballpark. Remember, people, we are spending taxpayers' money, not your money, to throw it up in the sky and saying, okay, you know, I'll get this. Oh, don't worry, you know, I'll put it in the budget bill. Or, oh, don't worry, I'll make sure it goes into that section of the law. I have no problem with that, but just show me where the money is going to come from. Show me the money. We can't continue in this body to spend in deficit. And that's not my words. That was the words of BBMR that came down here, with DOA that came down here. We are now spending in deficit. But we continue to put out these unfunded mandates. You know that's wrong. You know doggone well that's wrong. Even a fifth grader knows that's wrong. At least come up with a figure. At least, let's hear from DOE. Like I said again, they never showed up for the public hearing. And I went through the committee report. Hopefully, maybe they provided a testimony that I can look at and see what they have to say. Maybe there's a funding in there, what they're going to use. But not that. It's not there. So what does this body do? Continue on like it's no big deal? Everybody here wants to make sure, like I said, and countless times, not because you introduced a bill that you feel that it's more important for you to take care of these schools because you introduced the bill. Absolutely not. Everybody in this body wants to protect our children and our teachers and those working at these schools. Every single body, every single body. But once again, we're standing here, I mean, I was really sick last week. I couldn't attend the public hearing, I mean, not the public, in the session, where bills were thrown down this body's throat without even having a committee of the whole to discuss how much money was really there. What's the true figure? I was so, if it wasn't because I had COVID, I would have jumped down here. And I would have said something, big time. You can't do this. Come on, be responsible of the taxpayers' money on this island. We're spending in deficit. But no, you know, it just, all these votes went through, like, nobody cared, like, they're spending, you know, this is like, what? Like, they're spending, you know, this is like, what? Pixie dust? Is that what you guys are sprinting out here, is pixie dust? We need to be more responsible. And I asked the good author of this legislation, because it does make sense. But at least, can we hear from DOE how much this is going to cost? That's all I'm asking. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill. Senator San Augustine, on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as I read the bill, it's about the Department of Education creating a reporting system. Reporting it, recording it, and be available when they put on RFP or an IFB. That's what the information is for. As we want to talk about public health, public health doesn't do anything other than write an inspection. They don't even refer you to any specific private company because they can't, because there'll be a conflict of interest. They identify what the problems are and then they do it. But there are some issues, like the author of the bill mentioned, that not even public health identifies them. When they go walking in the building, they check it out, they find something, great. If they don't find something, they move on. It's almost like they're looking for specific items. And I say this from experience. I was on the Board of Education, I was the chairman, I attended a lot of inspections back then. And when public health goes through their, it's a sweep. It's not a detailed inspection. And with this, this just only requires, so I understand where my colleague comes up with the cost. But the cost won't be determined yet until an evaluation is made. Until an IFB is out, information for bid or proposal to determine what it could cost. And you don't need to be an expert to say there's mold. You don't need to be an expert to say there's a crack. You don't need to be an expert to say the water fountain don't work. That's what this report, this law does. It requires the Department of Education to write a report. In other words, everyone in the Department of Education is required, if you see something, say something and report it. Then it's funneled to the principal, then sent up to superintendent or the deputy superintendent. So it's compiled, then when they go out for an IFB or an RFP, then they use the report. Now, we ask about money. There's quite a few millions of dollars still sitting in ARP that DOE has. They're kicking out, they're supposed to be kicking out a bunch of contracts. Until we see it, we don't know what's going to happen. And at the same token, what's happening today is DOE is going to FEMA and everybody else to determine how their infrastructure or their buildings can be hardened so that it'll be ready to take whatever measures to accommodate students coming back or to convert back to a shelter. So with this bill, I stand in full support. It's a reporting mechanism. And if you read the bill, it never talks about money. And I like the idea that my vice chair says about money, because I'd like to know what it's going to cost. But at the same time, I'd like to hear from the new superintendent, which we'll hear on July 17th, when he will be testifying about the budget of DOE. When we hear from him, then we can ask him. Have you started the reporting mechanism? Have you started to record what are the problems you have in DOE? And have you started to determine? Because they do have a new capital improvement, a CIP guy. And let them figure it out. Let them tell us what's going on. And then we move from there, because I know the oversight chair is anxious to hear their report and to see some movement, not just the excuse of waiting for another bill to come out. But with that, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. And then we'll know what the money will cost. But right now, you can never identify the money based on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill. Senator Brown, you had your hand up. On the bill.
You know, I do rise in support of this bill. And I certainly understand the concerns that Senator Tello had raised. I mean, obviously, a lot of things that we would like to do have a price tag attached to it. But I have to tell you, and one of the challenges I've seen over the years with the Department of Education is the lack of accountability. We pour more money every single year. But the amount of money we pour isn't always concurrent with the outcomes. And the fact that we're going back to be concerned about the basic structural and integrity of buildings, the maintenance of the buildings, is concerning. Primarily because, you know, if you're in charge of the school system, you would think that those that do it every day would be addressing these concerns. But, you know, I guess there's a part of me that's a bit jaded because I've heard these comments, responses, excuses and excuses on top of excuses, why basic things that need to be done are not being done. And it's frustrating because, you know, we're legislators. We don't have the arms and legs to go into an agency such as the Department of Education actually do that job. The fact that this bill will require now these reports to be collected and consolidated and that the public in general also can keep track on whether or not these concerns are being addressed, I think, hopefully, the desire is hopefully, this will encourage some positive outcomes. Because now, all of a sudden, you know, there's an agenda that's listed out of what needs to be taken care of, and it's more public. It's more readily accessible in terms of information being provided. So we can come back and say, okay, where are we at this stage in the game? You know, why didn't this concern that, you know, was raised X amount of months or years ago? Why today has it not been addressed? You know, as I mentioned last week on another issue, when we were called into emergency session, you know, the complaint from the Department of Education before is we don't have enough money. You've not funded us with enough funds, and we need more funds to do these things. And now that they have more money than they've ever had, the response is, we can't process. We can't procure the things we need to do. Or we don't have enough personnel, we don't have enough people applying for these maintenance positions. That's why we can't get the job done. And I think, you know, we kind of have an expectation as a public, you know, these basic infrastructure issues can be addressed and should be addressed. You know, when I attended the meeting, the roundtable meeting, you know, one of the principals had commented that, you know, our children are deserving, and our teachers are deserving of surroundings as well as this legislature. And by all means, they should be. I mean, I went to public school, but I didn't have air conditioning. That's how long ago I was in public school. We had air conditioning in the library to keep our books from molding. But I still felt I got a very, very good public education, even though, you know, I didn't have all the things they have now to supposedly learn with. But, you know, this didn't happen overnight either. This building is, you know, 76 years old. This building for almost 25 years or more remained abandoned. I remember coming in here and watching the birds fly around. Because the decision had been made many years ago, you know, that they were going to rebuild a new legislature. And there's a lot of controversy, because what the legislature back then wanted to build was quite ostentation. It was supposed to be a six-story building that had all these fancy things that were to be designed into it, that the public just said, no, 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 absolutely not. And so this building sat here while we spent millions of dollars leasing. And then, of course, with the help of historic preservation, we're able to get the building refurbished and rebuilt. But I know this building didn't look like this, and this public, and this session hall didn't look like this after the typhoon. And a lot of our staff, including the Good Rules chairman I know, came in here over the weekend also to get this session hall prepared so that we could come in here and meet as flawlessly as if nothing happened. But that takes work, that takes investment, that takes time. It's not just age. A lot of older buildings on this island that are well-maintained. But that's the challenge, is how do you address it? And how do you address it when it's still a minor problem and not allowed to go on for months or years so that it becomes a bigger problem? Because we cannot, and I'm sure at some point we'll talk about Simon Sanchez, but we cannot rebuild all these schools on Guam. We just can't afford them. There's just no practical way to afford them. I remember JFK. We've had it on $15 million a year to debt service for the next, well, that was 40 years. Now, what, 30 years later? I was at DPW and JFK was reconstructed. We just can't do that. Maybe we do it for Simon Sanchez that was built in the early 70s. But there's not too many more schools financially. The taxpayers of Guam are going to be able to afford these whole idea that we just demolish school buildings and rebuild them. And money doesn't fall from trees. So ensuring that when these facilities are in operation, that they're maintained at the most basic level of sanitation, and they have the structural integrity that they need, I think we all agree is necessary. But more important, I like the idea of putting feet to the fire, people that are in charge. You know, a lot of people want to be in charge of things. They want to be the big boss. They want to make all the big tough decisions. Well, sometimes they do, maybe they don't always. But delivering on that responsibility, I think, is very critical. And they need to be able to answer for it. Because I'll tell you, my eyes glaze over already. I'm just, you know, all these years later, hearing the same old excuse, the same old reason why this, that, whatever, doesn't happen. You just get tired of it after a while. Especially if you are used to going in and taking an operation and getting it done and accomplishing it. So putting this, making it public, it's there for everyone to see. We can have an expectation, I would assume, within a reasonable time, that these issues can and should be addressed so that we ensure that our children have a safe environment. It's very disheartening to still hear that we don't have a safe environment in our schools for our kids to learn in. Learning is challenging enough, because nowadays, our young people, unfortunately, you know, the dynamics of our society now don't always have the same support base. I mean, I came home, I had a grandparent there at the end of the day. I had the support, you know, to encourage me to do my studies and do well and excel. But not every young person has that opportunity today. And sometimes, school is the only stable place they have to go, where they feel a sense of community, sometimes even a sense of family. Even, you know, we heard during the pandemic, some of these children, it's the only place they get a good meal for the day. So I think it's important, and, you know, we talk about how, yes, our children are important, but, you know, we got to do without just talking about it. And certainly, putting a greater sense of accountability to all public officials. Because I'll tell you, a lot get to slip and slide out of this, you know, sense of responsibility. We get our checks every two weeks, who cares whether we perform or not? And I think we want to see the level of performance in all government operations, including, most importantly, our public school system. So I certainly rise in support of this. And I hope that we continue to keep track of the performance of the Department of Education, because I think we all want to see the better improvements for our children. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill. On the bill.
On the main motion, I'll recognize Speaker Teresa Lai. On the main motion, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. I rise in support of the bill. I too agree with holding feet to the fire when it comes to schools, and especially, they have set their opening for the first week of August. And I think it's going to take all of us working together to get that done. And I really think we need the help, or they will need the help of the governor and every agency of this government, including us. So if this is going to help, I agree. And I actually totally agree with the whole premise of the bill. And that is, things were happening in the schools. Even the students and their parents did not know about it. So they were being exposed to things without anyone being informed. And sometimes, these areas were not being isolated, or they weren't being protected from infestations and other things. Or sometimes, the principals had made these complaints very clearly to downtown, and downtown was not clearly acting on it. Well, at least that's what I have heard, you know, in the different hearings that have taken place. And so one of the things I want to make sure is, okay, so there's different parts of this bill. And of course, that the superintendent shall receive and retain reports, absolutely. It should actually be the reverse, that we should mandate that school personnel, principals, report to the superintendent. And the maintenance people, that they report, that they have a duty to report, because it might, it might not put the kids at risk. But they should report it anyways, without any fear of any kind of retribution for reporting these things, or, you know, making the school look bad. And I just want all the principals and everybody involved in every school, we know that these schools are old, we know that there's huge challenges, and we know that we wouldn't even have come this far if not for all the help of all the parents, especially, and the principals and the teachers putting in their own personal resources to take care of these schools. So this is not to put an extra burden on you. It's really just to help in that we are all on the same page. And nobody, we're not going to hear anymore that, you know, two years later, oh, I've been reporting this for two years. What I love about the bill is that we are going to see, from day one, if the superintendent receives reports of issues in the schools. Section, on page three, D7, is going to require that the superintendent develops a warning system to notify the public of the areas that contain hazardous substances or infestations until remediated. On subsection three, same D3, page three, it requires that the superintendent is going to notify students, faculty, school personnel, parents, and regulatory agencies of the discovery. Sometimes, there was a disconnect between we have an infestation in the school and getting any other help from any other agency in the government to determine whether this is safe or not safe. And I really feel DOE just, just, you know, I hope they will accept that. Get help, seek help, don't be afraid to get that. And we're just going to all have to deal with the consequences of it. And, but better that, for example, isolating a wing of a school than exposing children who might be extremely vulnerable to that. Had they known, parents could have done something else, right? Kept them out of school for that day, whatever. But there were choices, as opposed to leaving them no choice and exposing them. So Section 2 of the bill, where it says that superintendent shall receive and retain reports from students, faculty, school employees, parents, and other stakeholders, I have an amendment I'm going to make later that's just going to add the word principals in there. Obviously, principals are part of school employees. But the reason I want to add their name is because I seem to detect at some of these hearings that principals feel afraid that if they make a big deal about it, that they are going to somehow, something's going to happen to them. And I don't know if this will actually protect them, but I want to make it clear that when they read their name in here, that that means they should report to the superintendents without any fear. On section three of the bill, I had a couple of questions I would like to just discuss with the sponsor. So I agree with reporting. The superintendent keeps this list. It's up to the superintendent to do everything in Part D. So that is, assess, remediate the hazards and the infestations by hiring or doing whatever they have to do. Isolating the areas, developing notifications, and notifying the students, parents, personnel. Investigating inspection schedules, reporting their findings to regulatory agencies. I think this is where they're going to get the help, right? These are the experts, EPA. If you think it's a gas, you're not sure, report it to EPA and let them tell you. And let them tell you how to remediate this certain type of gas or mold or whatever. And develop a warning system to the public. I think D actually is enough for the whole section of 7112.2. Assessment and remediation. That's D. A is a little bit where, I guess where, for me, questions arise. Similar to one of the preceding speakers, it's like, we expect the superintendent to identify microbiological and pathogenic hazards, including- to identify microbiological and pathogenic hazards, including bacteria, yeast, fungi, and viruses. I feel like that's extremely broad. Like, we've got fungi and probably bacteria in every bathroom, and to say that we are going to make the superintendent report on every single one of those things? No. Unless they become a hazard, or they think it might become a hazard. Number two, insects, I mean, that's covered in D. Infestations, rodent infestations, covered in D. Number four, substances hazardous, that's already covered by every other law, you know? I mean, and it's covered in D. Assess and remediate hazards, I mean hazardous things. Number five, noxious or toxic gas hazards. I don't know. That should be included in remediating hazardous substances in D. The reason why I'm saying this is because if we're going to, I feel like what they need to remediate should be controlled by other statutes. I mean, if we're saying that rodents are not controlled by any other statute, well, their infestations are covered in D. But I, I, I don't know. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think it's reasonable that we might have red ants in the school play yard, and that's an infestation of red ants. But we don't need to close down a school or, you know, I don't know. I just feel like it, a lot of this, I don't want it to be overbroad, that we really tie the hands of the superintendent from moving forward. I guess what really brought my attention to this is number six. Toxicity or allergens originating in flora. I don't know about you, but I think if you look down all our families, we're going to find people with allergies to different things, and a lot of them, different flowers on Guam. My dad was totally allergic to the yellow one and, you know, some of the others in my family, different ones. So I'm just afraid that, I do not think the superintendent needs to worry about allergens originating in flora, unless it's already, like, controlled by another provision of law, like, I don't know what, you know, I'm trying to think what would make it toxic. Allergens and toxicity is different. Hazards in the water distribution systems. I hope there's some kind of standard operating procedures for testing water. Generally, they're getting their water from GWA. I really hope the schools do not have to do their own independent testing of water. And GWA, that's their responsibility. They are pumping the water into the schools, we are giving that to our children, that's GWA's responsibility. So that's why I'm kind of thinking that we could remove A, and the bill would still be powerful, it would achieve its purpose, without going overbroad and putting mandates on the superintendent that, that I just feel are, this would be a challenge even for EPA to enforce. B is to conduct annual inspections of remediated hazards. I have no, no objection to B and C. I would, I guess I would add that to, I would just, I don't know, maybe just ask the author if he would yield to a discussion on, on the subsection A. If, if we removed subsection A and left only subsection D, would that be enough? Or do you feel like the schools, I know we're talking about mold. So I guess the premise is that mold is not covered by any other statute on Guam and that mold is allowed. And I don't know if we've investigated that, right? Like, what is public health's response to why in their sanitary inspections, mold is not covered? So maybe the sponsor might yield to that. Or, or why across the nation, if our public health is not enforcing it, then it must not be enforced by public healths across the nation. And I just, I think maybe even they're going to argue there are certain types of mold that are deadly, certain types of mold that are harmless. I mean, I don't know. But I'm, I guess that's why I don't want the superintendent to have to become a biologist, specialist, hazardous mitigation specialist. I don't want that. We want her to be an education specialist, or him. And, and that's what I want. And I want this common sense when it comes to, you know, assessing the schools.
Speaker, I'll ask, would you like to yield, Senator Barnett, or?
Senator Barnett? Oh, one more thing I'd just like to throw in before he, he does, if he wants to yield is, so the, the schools have told us that before they open, they are doing what's called checklist, right? Opening checklist. And I want to know, are these things included in their opening checklist or not? Are these totally new parameters that we're asking them to check for that, that they wouldn't even know how to check for either, right? And, and so I just, I think hazardous substances and infestations makes sense, so.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Barnett, there were a couple of inquiries there. I'm hoping you would yield, could you yield? You may proceed, Senator Barnett.
Thank you. Thank the previous speaker for all those questions. Yeah, it's section A, number one, microbiological and pathogenic hazards, including bacteria, yeast, fungi, and viruses, that's just mold, basically. It's a fancy way of putting mold in. The previous speaker is right, we don't know if this mold is harmless or this mold is harmful. But what I do know is that, and someone had mentioned fifth graders before, is that I actually got a complaint from a parent of a fifth grade student because their child has asthma, and they believe that it was being irritated and aggravated by the presence of mold in, in the classroom. And so that's why, that's included here. And that's why everything else is included here, is these are some of the things that we have heard from teachers and students and parents that exist in the school facility. So I wanted to get them down as just some of the things. And I think I, I might just proffer an amendment here for section A that would maybe read the Guam Department of Education for, including, but not limited to the following. And I'll, I'll get that work done. But yeah, I agree, I don't think that the superintendent is going to be required to be a microbiologist or a Louis Pasteur, or anything like that. I think what's going to happen is when these, these issues are identified by the common folk, if you will, then that would require an assessment, where they go out and they find the people who have the expertise to assess it, whether it's public health or the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, or, you know, a contractor. And that's why they would tack this on to the procurement. I know there have been questions about the funding, but I would just say, we don't know how much it's going to cost to mitigate something if we don't know what we're mitigating. And so I would, I would just say that it's just a little bit of cart before the, the horse. But yeah, I agree with the concerns of the previous speaker, but again, I, I feel like that, that we're just listing down the things that we have heard about, the things that, that we know exist at the school setting, so that they're listed down and so that the superintendent is aware that these are the kind of things that, that people are, are bringing up. And then section D, I feel, in my interpretation, is section A kind of lists the things that we can be looking out for. And then section D requires GDOE to develop the standard operating procedures for everything that was listed in, in the previous section. So I'm not sure if that addresses all of the inquiries that the previous speaker had, and I'm more than willing to yield to any further questions that anyone may have. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Barnett. Speaker Chulahi, does that suffice?
I thank the sponsor for yielding. Again, I'm just concerned that we're, we're allowing them to receive and retain reports and make those public, send them to agencies, and, and notify parents when they receive reports. But subsection A, 7112.2A in section three, says that the superintendent shall develop procedures to identify and remediate, and it doesn't say, it says, "microbiological and pathogenic hazards, including bacteria, yeast, fungi, and viruses." And, and as I said earlier, the whole list, so I, including allergens originating in flora. And I think we need to mandate opening of the schools, right? We want sanitary permits, we want them to pass their sanitary permits. And if there's something wrong with the sanitary guidelines, then let's fix those. Or if there's something wrong with EPA's, what they're defining as hazardous, then let's fix those. But I don't want the superintendent to go above and beyond public health, EPA, OSHA, and everybody to determine what is safe and what is not safe. I think the reporting should help take care of that, because everything will be reported. She can study it and do assessments and, and remediate if they are hazardous substances or infestations, including hiring contractors, which she's already authorized to do. And they can inspect. But yeah, I just don't want to be ourselves listing other things. Noxious or toxic gas hazards. I, I don't know, I remember, you know, and this is just an extreme example, but in high schools, you have labs, and they are noxious and toxic gases that you're supposed to be dealing with in there and learn how to deal with those things. So I, I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't want to be overbroad. And so I, I trust that the author has, you know, done a lot of research on this, but I still think that if this is, if, if it's just mold that wasn't covered in the existing regulations, then maybe, you know, we can write hazardous mold somewhere here and not include every other microbiological and pathogenic hazard that may be out there or in here or on our microphones and everywhere. I don't know, I hope, I hope he gets my point. But that's why, I'm just worried the language is too broad. That's really the bottom line. I'm not saying none of those is, is relevant, I'm saying the language is very broad and it's going to cover things that I don't think we intend to cover. Otherwise, I support the bill, I'd just like to make an amendment to add the word principals in section two.
On section two, to add the word principals, are there any objections or anyone wishing to speak? If there are no objections, motion carries.
Thank you, and I support the bill.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Barnett, you may close on the main motion.
Madam, can I call for a moment's recess?
We'll take a moment's recess.
I'm Nina Chantais, she's in the [inaudible] is back from recess. Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have an amendment that I hope will address some of the concerns that were raised by my colleagues. It's in the drive and it's to amend section three of the bill to read. A new subsection seventy-one, twelve dot two is added to chapter seven, title seventeen, Guam Code annotated hereby read as follows. Seventy-one, two dot two, assessment or remediation of hazardous substances and infestations. A, the superintendent shall develop pursuant to the provisions of chapter nine, title five, Guam Code annotated procedures to identify and remediate conditions of the facilities of the Guam Department of Education, including but not limited to, and then I struck through all the way down to here, any substance or infestation deemed to be hazardous by, including but not limited to, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Guam Environmental Protection Agency, United States Department of Health and Human Services, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and the United States Drug Enforcement Administration, and the United States Department of Agriculture. So just to ask for the support of my colleagues for this amendment. Thank you.
On that motion, are there any objections or anyone wishing to speak? Senator Duñez, you are recognized at this time on the amendment.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. I certainly rise in support of this amendment. I think that it basically simplifies what the goal is of this bill, which I support. I think Department of Education, when they come down for their budget hearing and other things going forward, in terms of a lot of the recent legislation, kind of trying to focus on getting things back on track, will let us know what the requirements are in terms of trying to come into compliance. But you know, Madam Chair, basically in any operation, when you're dealing with facilities, essentially what we're getting to here is kind of like a hazmat overview, and basically an overview of anything that really creates environmental issues. And I think it's appropriate because that's what seems to have come to play with a lot of the recent focus and energy on ensuring that our schools can come into compliance, you know, particularly because the real interaction is between public health and Department of Education. That's really where kind of the rubber was hitting the road in terms of inspections, in terms of ensuring that the environment, you know, is acceptable and adequate for a proper learning environment. So I think this is a simplification of something that really encompasses all of more of the technical language that was included earlier, simply because, once again, anyone involved in facilities maintenance or maintenance of any operation, really, that requires building, structures, vehicles, anything that has environmental controls, essentially that's what it comes down to. You need to ensure that those spaces comply with proper environment, which means the air you breathe, which means surfaces that you touch, which means a building that's not going to fall on your head, you know, anything that really pertains to safety and the well-being of those occupying that space for a time certain. So I think it's a logical amendment. I think it doesn't put an overarching burden on the superintendent, be it the current superintendent or the incoming superintendent, whoever gets to drive this ship when this bill is passed and work on implementing it. I think, I think the logic is there, and I think it's going to be an easy read with regard to this amendment, saying, we get it, we understand, these reports will be compiled because they're actually vital in terms of moving forward and determining, you know, the pathway there. Public Health already knows what they're looking for when they go out and have to use their checklist to deem a facility safe for operation that runs the gamut of everything that that facility is going to do, teaching and learning, you know, nutritional, you know, support in terms of cafeteria feeding, you know, using of restrooms. I mean, just, it's no different really than what we ask as the author of this bill has been kind of pushing since moving towards trying to bring these education facilities into compliance, no different than what we asked of any other establishment where there's an expectation that their sanitary environment, proper environment, and an environment that's conducive, in this case, to learning and just your overall well-being when you're inside of a building that you're going to be in for hours, for an entire school year, and hopefully for all of them, twelve school years, and then moving on to better and greener pasture. So I think it's a good amendment. I think it encompasses what the spirit and intent of the bill is, and I support it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, Senator Duñez. Anyone else on the Chris Barnett amendment? If not, are there any objection? Speaker Terla, you're recognized on the Senator Barnett amendment.
Thank you. I want to thank the sponsor of the amendment for this amendment. I think it makes the bill much stronger. It's very clear now, to me, what the mandate for the superintendent is, and it's not overly broad, which I was worried about. I was also thinking that these, you know, they're on a super short timeframe, August, and these are supposedly known requirements to them. If they're not already, then they should be included in every checklist that they have. And so this just reinforces that and puts it directly on the superintendent. It's not the principal's job to mitigate hazardous facilities. I think it's a good placement on the superintendent. It's a principal's job to report those things, and then it's the DOE School Systems' job to mitigate them, especially when we're talking about hazardous and, you know, things that really require complex and regulatory help. And, oh, I also wanted to mention, so Department of Public Health at the public hearing also offered that they have guidelines to assist DOE in getting ready, and not just they're going to come in in the end and inspect, and you fail or you lose, but it's, they have guidelines, and if DOE follows these guidelines, that they, that they will be able to help them, that public health can then help them to get these schools ready. But as I said earlier, it's going to take every agency of the government of Guam, I truly believe that, to get these schools ready by August. That's one month. So I support this amendment, and again, I think it makes the bill absolutely stronger, and I hope we get to the intent where hazards are exposed to the public, they're exposed to the parents most especially, and that we can keep the students away from them if they are going to be harmed. That's the goal, and I think this, this will get us to that. Sisus Massey, Madam speaking.
Bueno, Speaker Terla, on the Chris Barnett amendment, if no one else wishes to speak, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Barnett, you still have the floor on the main motion.
Thank you.
For closing.
I want to thank my colleagues for their support and also for their discussion and their ideas, their comments and concerns on this bill. I think, you know, at the end of the day, coming out with a better bill than the one I put in, and that wouldn't be possible without the lively discussion and, again, the ideas from my colleagues here on, on the floor. And so I thank them for that, and I would like to offer cosponsorship opportunities to, I believe, Vice Speaker Tina Muni Barnes, Speaker Terri Terla, Senator Parkinson, Senator Sinagustine, Senator Canata, Senator Siniklas, Senator Duñez, yes, Senator Brown, Senator Shelton, Senator Brown. Yeah, I want to put everybody, I don't know if that's okay with Senator Tidaway. Senator Fisher? No? All right. Well, yeah, everybody with the exception, I believe, of Senator Fisher and Senator Tidaway. Are you okay, Senator Blas? Thank you. And also Senator Sabina, is that, can I do that?
She's already a sponsor.
Oh, that's right. Hello, she was right there since the beginning. Thank you. I thank her for her, her support, as you know, many of the...
On the motion to include sponsors, is there any objection? Hearing no, seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you. And again, I just, I'm very grateful and I'm very humbled by the support of my colleagues for this measure, and I definitely thank them, and I look for swift passage of this when it gets time to, to vote on it. And that being said, I move to place Bill forty-four dash thirty-seven COR as amended on the floor to the third reading file for voting later.
On that motion to place Bill forty-four dash thirty-seven COR as amended on the floor to the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to, I'd like for the body to reconsider adding, I'd like to motion to, for the body to reconsider Bill number twenty dash thirty-seven COR, an act to restore access to federal public assistance for otherwise eligible individuals with felony drug convictions, to, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, onto the third reading file.
Notwithstanding the rules.
Notwithstanding House rules, ma'am.
On that motion to reconsider Bill number twenty dash thirty-seven COR, notwithstanding the House rules, the standing rules, is there any objection? There's an objection, and there's an objection?
Point of order.
Is there an objection?
Madam Speaker, if I may, the motion is to put it on the, just to understand it, so I know what I'm voting on here, that the motion is to put the bill in the third reading file. Third reading file is the voting...
No, it's a motion to reconsider the actions of the body which, which denied putting the bill on the third reading. That would reconsider it in the second reading.
It would go to the second reading file?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam. I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Yes. Is that an objection? Senator Blas?
I just wanted to make that clear, it's going back into the second.
If the motion passes, it will be reconsidered in second reading? If the motion passes? So there's a motion to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number twenty dash thirty-seven COR, notwithstanding the standing rules, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill number twenty dash thirty-seven COR. Senator Parkinson, you're still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to motion to move Bill twenty dash thirty-seven COR LS, an act to restore federal public assistance to otherwise ineligible, ineligible, excuse me, to otherwise eligible individuals with felony drug convictions.
Thank you. On the motion, is there anyone who'd like to speak on this? Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Parkinson. I would like to move the body reconsider my amendment to that bill.
I think we can just take your amendment straight up without a reconsideration, so copies should be on the tables. You're making a motion to amend the bill.
I am making a motion to amend the bill on my amendment. The amendment that was originally submitted that would require...
All right, you have the floor.
Point of information, Madam Speaker, can the good Senator from Epan, the Epanese, if he doesn't mind, refresh our memory on the substance of the amendment, because it's been a minute. Thank you.
So Senator Fisher, you have the floor. This is your fifteen minutes on the bill to say whatever you want about the bill and to talk about your amendment. So you've made a motion on the amendment, so now we're on the amendment.
Okay, so being heard on the amendment, the amendment, just to refresh the gentleman's memory, it adds Section Nine, and it says that twenty-seven oh six, random drug testing, formerly convicted felonies, felons rather, eligible to receive SNAP and/or TANF benefits under this act, shall be subject to random drug testing for the duration of their eligibility for SNAP and/or TANF benefits. Two consecutive positive drug tests shall automatically disqualify such individuals from continuing to receive SNAP and/or TANF benefits. And I know that one of my colleagues who's asked about this was not present at the earlier discussion, so if, I'll just, I'll just go ahead and reiterate what was said. The thrust of the main bill is to allow people convicted of drug felonies to, at some point in their recovery, begin to receive these benefits. The amendment itself requires a bit of a quid pro quo here. If you are to receive those benefits, then you must remain clean. And how do we do that? We do that by discovering whether somebody, through testing, we discover whether or not they have violated a condition by going back to the use of drugs. Another, one of my colleagues expressed concern that individuals were not getting a second chance under this law or this amendment. I would just like him to consider the fact that it requires two consecutive positive drug tests, not merely two drug tests, but two consecutive drug tests. So as a practical matter, if a person tests positive for the use of crystal methamphetamine, they are not immediately disqualified from the program. But if they come in for a consecutive drug test and are positive, they are excluded from the program. It is also true that if an individual tests positive, that, and there is an intervening drug test that shows negative, and then a subsequent positive, they are still not excluded. So they do get that second chance, and I hope that helps to quell some concerns about an overly draconian outcome here. What it does require of the individual is that they make a positive, actual affirmative choice in order to receive the benefits, not to use these controlled substances. It's not onerous, since we're not allowed to use those controlled substances in any case, it merely requires responsibility from the individual. It requires that person to actually invest or reinvest in the social contract and live as successful members of the community as we care for them through SNAP and TANF benefits. But it also requires that these individuals not continue to break the law. That doesn't seem like an overly onerous or burdensome requirement for an individual. So I have said before that the bill, the bill itself is motivated by a sense of charity, and I think that is commendable. But while we work through, or while we, I guess while we accomplish our agreement one with another, if we are going to give you the benefits, then you must agree to something very simple, that is to obey the law. If you refuse to obey the law, it is not our choice that you not obey the law, rather it is the individual's choice. So it would be erroneous to think that a person who tests positive consecutively twice is being treated unfairly. It is, in fact, that person who has made the election to eliminate themselves from the TANF or SNAP program. And thank you, ma'am. To continue, I'd just be reiterating what I have said this morning as well as just recently. So I would just ask my colleagues to vote and support this bill to bring more accountability and, the amendment, the amendment, thanks, thank you, Senator, to consider and support the amendment. It does no more than bring people, and it's actually, you know, to be honest with you, ma'am, it's also, it's also a kind of a bit of a coercive element to keep people on the straight and narrow. If they want to continue to get the SNAP benefits and the TANF benefits, and if they are, in fact, earnest in feeding their families and feeding their children, then the selection, the choice is easy. Stay clean, and we will, we will allow you to have the benefits. If you don't stay clean, and there are onerous results, it is no fault of the people of Guam. It is the fault of the individual who has elected, in spite of the many tools that are available, in spite of the many tools they've already exploited to quit using drugs, it's their choice to continue the use, and actions have consequences. Actions have consequences. And so I would ask my colleagues to please vote in support of the amendment, and Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Barnett, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just had a question for the author of the amendment.
Please state your question.
Could he please explain formerly convicted felons?
Would the author yield to the question?
Yes, I will. I agree with the Senator that that is kind of awkwardly phrased. Once convicted, you are not formerly convicted, you are convicted. So the, and I'm glad he pointed that out, I mean, it's, adding that adverb doesn't really make too much sense. Formerly convicted, once you've been convicted, you have been convicted. I don't know that it's, I think it's superfluous, I don't know that it has any impact on the actual thrust of the amendment. I hope I've answered the gentleman's question, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. I would just caution that the defendant is either convicted or exonerated. Formerly convicted, to me means the defendant was convicted, appealed, and the conviction was ultimately vacated. So I would just, I don't know if he wants to remove the word formerly or if he's good with it, I'm just offering that, ma'am.
I think that that, I think that that is...
Would this sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, I do. I think that that is, I think that's kind of an astute observation. I can see somebody perhaps over litigiously making that argument, but I think he's correct. I would like to strike the word formerly and change, and the word convicted, change lowercase c, the first lowercase c to uppercase.
Thank you for yielding to the questions. Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
Okay, and if, I'm sorry, if the gentleman would like to make the amendment, I got no problem with that.
Yeah, Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm good. Maybe if the author of the amendment would like to just cross that out, if that's what he so desires, that's something I would support. Thank you. Nothing further, ma'am.
Thank you. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senators Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, you know, I spoke on this this morning, and I asked a question. Sure, after two consecutive, they're bumped off the SNAP program. Many of us, I don't know, correction, let me just correct myself, not even say many. I know of many folks that were addicted, and it took them a couple of years to get off it. And when they finally cleared with this amendment, there's no recourse for them to get back on and get some assistance. That's what concerns me. Sure, we can talk about, you can make the right decision. Sure, you, you made the wrong decision, you got caught, you go to jail. Maybe you didn't have a good attorney, keep out of jail. But at the same token, once you're convicted, you're convicted, that's done. You take a test, you fail, take another test, you fail. But if the individual goes to a full rehabilitation program, and it's cleared, and it's good to go for the past two, three years, or even five years, or even more, he can't get any SNAP assistance. I don't see any recourse for this, and I asked that earlier. Is there a recourse after the two? Because remember, this amendment is throughout the time they're getting SNAP. They could be on SNAP for ten years, and all of a sudden, they slip, they got caught, two consecutive tests. How soon is the two consecutive tests? Is one right after the other, one month, two months later, three months, six months? There's a process that people go through to rehabilitate themselves. And that's what concerns me, is that once the individual's been rehabilitated, and he's, and he's doing his best, he's focused, this program is to assist them so they're not starving. Because there are many businesses out there that won't hire anybody that are convicted. And that's what concerns me, is that what is the recourse for the individual that didn't pass two consecutive tests and finally cleans up so he can get some assistance? That's, that's what my reservation is on this amendment. Otherwise, I support the bill, the amendment now, I'm questioning this because I need that, that little opportunity for individuals that need that help. Because there are many on Guam. It took them, some of them, four or five years to get cleaned up. Different intervention by family, friends, coworkers, they got involved, and they finally helped, and they cleaned it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Parkinson, and then Senator Siniklas. So Senator Parkinson.
As my good colleague said back there, there is no recourse if somebody slips up and they fail their two random drug tests. They are just back to a lifetime ban. The entire purpose of this legislation is to stop and opt out of this lifetime ban. This amendment just brings us right back to lifetime ban with extra steps. And so for that reason, I'm opposed to this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support the amendment. I think after two tries, and you were found again to not qualify for this, I think that's a safe measure, that maybe you don't deserve these chances. I support the amendment because it puts the responsibility on those who are taking, who may take advantage of this, and holds them to, holds them responsible, responsible for their actions. This is a very, very responsible amendment. It's a good amendment, and it's sending a strong, I mean, it's just, it's just nice to hear that we, as elected officials now, we're engaging and finally recognizing how bad our situation is when it comes to drug, drug addiction here on this island, particularly meth. And I thank the author for proffering the bill because it's really high time we start talking about this, and sending a message to people out there that, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna try to help you out, but you're gonna have to also try to help yourself. And maybe when you do make the commitment, and you do come out, and you've done, and you've paid your, your debts to society, that you remain clean. And the, the drug thing that we're having is such a tragedy, you know? I've seen it as a school counselor, I've seen it as a customs officer, I see it as a businessman, how it affects our, our families out there, and it's just such a tragedy. And it's, it's really nice that, and it's about time that we're actually recognizing what a destructive, how meth destroys our families. And so I rise in support of the, the bill, and I support this amendment. Because when you're done paying your debts to society, we're hoping that you remain clean, and you stay clean, and it shouldn't take two, it shouldn't take two before you're disqualified from that. And it also holds those people who, who pay their debts to society, holds them accountable for their actions, even after they paid their debts to society, and that's why this is a good amendment, and I support the amendment, and I thank the good author, Senator Fisher, really good friend of mine, really good honorable gentleman. Thank you for proffering this, and to the good Senator up there, Senator Parkinson, for, for actually proffering something that we do need, and people do need second chances, but they must be held accountable. And it's our job to make sure that they remain accountable. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Titegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just real short, you know, I'm not going to reiterate what I said earlier, but I think, you know, we, we've given them an opportunity, this bill, which I do support, gives them an opportunity to, to go on the SNAP program. which I do support, gives them an opportunity to, to go on the SNAP program, to have benefits. You know, recidivism is something that was brought up earlier. However, like anybody, regardless, if you're breaking the law, then you will no longer be avail yourself to anything. I mean, this, this not just drugs, Madam Speaker, fraud. You know, SNAP, there are people who have fraudently taken advantage of the SNAP program. And they will not be allowed, Madam Speaker, to, you know, avail them of the SNAP program. Here, this amendment simply says two consecutives. How many chances do we need to keep giving individuals? One, we're giving them a chance on this bill, number one. Number two, we said that in the event they come out consecutively, if they test positive once, they're still not kicked out. But if they test positive a second time in a row, then, Madam Speaker, that's abuse. You know, I, it just, we're doing what we can to help. But we can't let individuals continue to take advantage of those who continue to be good abiding citizens. So I stand in full support of this amendment, and appreciate the previous speaker, you know, talking about the importance of finding a way to, to assist them, and then, and also being responsible. We all have to have that responsibility. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Senators. Senator Blassey, I recognize.
Thank you Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, obviously, I support this amendment. Should this amendment pass, I'll support the bill. But let's, you know, we talk about the chances here, that we want to provide opportunities for a better life. Let's go back to the genesis of this whole thing. First off, before you can be, you are convicted of a drug crime. That's what made you, right now, as the law stands, ineligible. What this bill proposes, and what this amendment proposed to do, it says, okay, despite that conviction, strike one, we'll give you that opportunity. And if you fall off the wagon, when you're first, when, first off, you're subjected to a random drug test. Not a compulsory drug test, not a drug test that says every month you will be drug tested. It's a random. And let's say that you now get selected, and you have to go for your random drug testing, and you test positive. Strike two! But you know what? The author of the amendment was unanimous enough to be able to give you another opportunity. And in that opportunity, if you figure out, okay, very, strike two, I should go to, be serious about this. And then you take another random drug, you get subjected to another random drug test, and you test positive again? Strike three! You know, there's an old adage. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. Fool me three times, what a shame. Ma'am, we're giving this individual the opportunity. Is that too much to ask for? Oh, excuse me, but by the way, you know a sex offender? When a sex offender gets convicted, he gets put on a sex offender registry, no matter what rehab he goes through, for life. Everywhere that sex offender has to go to, to change his residence and everything, he's got to register, for life. You think they give a damn as to whether or not he went through rehabilitation? No! And here's another thing. Just recently, over the last couple of weeks, members of this body have been very critical about drug offenses, or offenses involving drugs, especially in, while committed in the midst of a disaster. Members of this body have been very critical about how drugs have been, drug use and drug-related crimes have become rampant on this island. We need to do something. Well, this amendment gives us that opportunity to do something. Because if jail time caps scare them, if getting arrested every other day because they get released from prison, that doesn't scare them, then maybe the possibility that they're not going to be able to fend for themselves or their family members because of their stupidity. It's stupidity if you're gonna fail consecutive drug tests. And we want to let that go? I apologize for being heated at this discussion right now. But for God's sake, people are dying because of drug use. People are dying because of drug trafficking, because of drug crimes. This op, this amendment here gives us an opportunity to take a small, but very significant stand. It's that simple. So I ask my colleagues, please, I know we want to help, but as the good senator, the good gentleman from Cross Island Road said, if you want to really make a difference in your life, then do it right, and do the right thing. And there should be consequences for your action. Because the last time I checked in the baseball I played, strike three is you're out. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Senator. On the amendment, Senator Duane, you're recognized.
Thank you Madam Chair. And I also won't reiterate my initial comments on this amendment, and now that we're reconsidering it. But I will say one thing. I, I don't share, my good friend, the senior gentleman from Gigo, because there's two of them, I just, I don't share that position. And simply put, the reason why is, the bill is going to open the door to allow that convicted felon to avail now of this opportunity whereby they were not able to avail of that opportunity because of their conviction. I would imagine, and I would pray, that that individual has already sought, if not completed, rehabilitation programs in order to change their life to the point to where they see the opportunity and the chance to become in the good graces of this program, to receive these benefits, food benefits. You know, Madam Speaker, there are people who have actually discussed, not just here, but in the mainland, those requirements for individuals who aren't even convicted. Now, of course, that's a radical step, but just think of that. Individuals in good standing, who haven't been arrested, or caught, or otherwise even accused, but that the program should contain some time of random testing. That's not what we're debating here, but that's been discussed before. Imagine this now. So I also, once again, want to support many of the comments by the retirement speakers who are in support of this amendment, to include our good senator from Huguet. I think he made some very, very strong presentations of being duly responsible, having been given a second chance and an opportunity. The bill is good, but the conditions, I think, are appropriate. I mean, imagine, prior to this bill being introduced, there's no opportunity. Now there is opportunity. All we're saying is, it comes with a duty and a responsibility. And two consecutive drug tests at that, random. I think that's reasonable, and I think in light of a lot of the comments from our good colleagues, I hope this amendment passes. Because I think it sends a good message from this body, and all the other efforts that are being made, to do everything that we can to curb the scourge of drug abuse, particularly methamphetamine, which is ravaging our island. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Senator. On the amendment, Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I certainly also, once again, rise in support of this amendment. I'm not going to reiterate all the points I made earlier today, but I certainly would say our good colleague from Baragada doesn't have a reason to apologize. I think he's relayed the sentiment to a lot of our people. A lot of our people are feeling, who are, are probably the biggest victim in this whole process, of the scourge of the drug abuse that we have in our community that's created, you know, the sense of insecurity and the, and the lack of safety that our people should feel on their island, in their homes, and with their families. And I agree. I mean, we're opening up an opportunity, and even though it's on the federal taxpayers' back, it's still on the back of someone that's working to contribute to this economy, to generate the money that pays for all these programs. I think we need to recognize that. I don't think we should abuse it just because, oh, the Fed's paying for it. The times come, Madam Speaker. I think a lot of our people are just, they're fed up, and they have every right to be. And if others in our community, again, no one's perfect, we all are, we all have our challenges, we all sometimes make mistakes, just a question of degree. But if you do choose to improve your life, if you do choose to walk away from drug abuse and the problems that are connected with it, and you make that responsible decision, we're here to support you. But for those that want to continue to harm this community, I don't think it's okay. I think enough is enough. I think our people have put up with enough and continue to suffer from it. And for us to not allow and put those in check that bring harm on our people, then we fail. We have failed as leaders to address this growing problem in our community. And I have to say enough is enough. So I certainly support Senator Fisher's amendment, and certainly thank him for bringing it forth once again. I think this kind of legislation and amendments our people would like to see. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this amendment.
Thank you Senator. On the amendment, Senator Luhon, on the amendment, you're recognized.
Thank you Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I once again rise in full support of this amendment. As was mentioned earlier about chances given, and actually, this, this amendment calls for, actually, the third chance for this individual, or the individuals. They would be considered, of course, after they've been convicted, but then this, this amendment calls for two consecutive drug, failing two consecutive drug testing randomly. So basically, in essence, that would be the third chance. A caucus leader had mentioned earlier as well about this body being critical about drug use, and almost every bill, or every roundtable, where law enforcement and the AGs involved, they talk about, and, and, and we know about 90-plus percent of the, of crimes committed as a component of, of drug use, drug paraphernalia being, being found. We're at an all-time high in regards to meth use here on our island. Likewise, an all-time low in cost. We're often critical of the judicial system on catch and release. The AG is very critical on that, as a matter of fact. He's calling for, hey, they've been caught with, with drugs, incarcerate them. They're not, there's not safe for society, they're not safe for them to be out in society. Because they've changed from that person that they used to be, to the person had a stake in drugs, they're not that same person. So I, I support this bill with the addendum of this amendment, because the bill gives them the third, or the bill gives them a chance. This amendment gives them the third chance, basically, with, with this, but also holds them accountable. Holds them accountable. I mean, right now, as was mentioned earlier as well, that they're not, I mean, right now, you're convicted, and you're on the SNAP program, then, then you're off the program. So even with that in place, even with that in place, we have all-time high in its usage, and all-time low in its cost. So that in itself is not a deterrent. Now, I don't know what the numbers are in regards to folks that are on SNAP, that may be convicted, I don't know what the, those numbers are, maybe, maybe those numbers are available. But in general, that in itself has not deterred the all-time high in usage. We're saying, we don't want you to go hungry. But likewise, we want you to, to, we don't want you to be using drugs, and be a menace to society as well. We're giving you an opportunity. Now, what are you going to do to help yourself? This is three chances already, and if you can't keep up to that, at what point do we say enough is enough? And we can't, again, be, as a body, be critical of its use, of drug use, or meth use here on our island, if we don't also put this amendment in and say, hey, look, you have to be, you take responsibility. We're giving you a third chance. Prior to that, they wouldn't have given you any chance. We're going beyond, above and beyond, giving you the third chance. Now you got to help yourself. And if they don't want to help yourself, that means they don't want to help society. They don't want to be better citizens. And if they don't want to be better citizens, do we want to reward them? For their bad behavior, and having no consequence? So again, the bill is compassionate, since we don't want to see any of our brothers and sisters go hungry. But this amendment, again, holds them responsible to society. Although we don't contribute here to, to- Although we don't contribute here to the payment for the SNAP program, because it's a federal program. But taxpayers do. And so we don't just want it a free-for-all, that, yeah, your bad behavior could be rewarded because it's not, it won't hinder you. They need to know that, and especially if they have families, they need to know that this will hinder, after the third strike, this will hinder you continuing to receive this benefit. These aren't kids we're talking about. These aren't embersels we're talking about. These are people who, if they would continue to do as such, we're caring about them, but they don't give a damn about us. Or their families, for that matter. We need to hold them accountable for their actions as well. This is going above and beyond. And yes, we all make mistakes. But we always say, don't repeat that mistake. And the person that's on drugs, on meth, it's not that same person that we knew was once good and smart and maybe valedictorian, or whatever it may be. They're not that same person anymore. So they need to know that, yes, we're giving you an opportunity. But there are parameters of that opportunity. It's up to you now. The onus is on you. Why should the onus be on the rest of society? Why would the burden constantly be on society, on people, on citizens that are well-behaved, in good citizens? If they want to clean up themselves and be a part of a good society and good citizenry, then yes, you'll avail yourselves to the benefits of being as such. But if not, then you don't. It's very simple. How sympathetic can we be? How many sorrys? How many, I won't do it again? Are we going to have to listen to? How many crimes have to be committed? How many times do they have to go against their families, or whatever it is, against their families? For us to say enough is enough? So, again, I support the bill with the amendment that will hold that person accountable. And again, it's not that it'd be their first offense, but it'd be the third time. Not convicted, but two consecutive drug testing and failure after the two randomly. It'd be, in essence, a third chance. Madam Speaker, with that, again, I encourage my colleagues to support this amendment from Senator, proffered by Senator Fisher. It's a great amendment to a compassionate bill. With that, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment,
On the amendment, Speaker Therese, you are recognized.
Thank you. I want to thank all my colleagues for the discussion on this amendment. It's been very, very good. I'm encouraged that we are all very united in our sentiment about the scourge that drugs have had on Guam, on the people of Guam, on our manomco, and everyone, our children. And I understand the amendment is intended so that we don't reward people for drug offenses. And we don't reward them for I just want to put on the record during this debate that I'm just afraid the amendment does not address what has been talked about today as the real issues that we are facing. One is that when they are addicted, this amendment is going to test people and see whether they are, they've been using drugs, so they're going to do drug testing on them. That's it. Drug testing. It doesn't require that they're going to be convicted of anything further, they're going to be arrested, they're going to be drug tested. So what it's going to tell us is who's addicted? That they continue to use drugs, they continue to not have overcome that addiction, or they've renewed their addiction. The problem is that the studies over and over have shown us that addiction, I mean, punishing them by not giving them food is not going to deter them from using the drugs. And so when we say, oh, if they were really motivated by their families, they wouldn't have done it, or they, you know, they'd keep the SNAP benefits and not do the drugs. Some of them, yes. But that is the problem with addiction, that that's not my science. That's the science of addiction, is that they are not making those decisions. That's why it's not a deterrent. That's why this ban has been lifted in the states, all of the states. Because if it was a deterrent, they wouldn't have lifted it. Because nobody wants the drugs. And everybody's trying to find something that will deter it. But my real issue with this amendment is that in singling out, first of all, the ban singles out drug felonies. It does not ban other felonies, other felons. It doesn't ban assault felons. It doesn't ban rapists from getting SNAP or TANF. The ban does not prevent other felons from getting this food. It prevents drug felons only. And as was stated earlier by one of my colleagues, on Guam, this would ban not the dealers, not the traffickers, but might ban only the users. So of all the people in our system that we are going to deny food from, who are already out of prison, served their sentence, I would much rather ban and tie it to things like what some of the other states have done. They've tied it to, we're going to ban those drug traffickers. Or we're going to ban those who get arrested again for trafficking, We're going to ban those whose crimes originally had injury or death. Or we're going to ban those whose crimes were also tied to fraud on SNAP benefits together with the drugs. But they make a distinction between banning those who, we're not even banning those who, we're banning, we would be, by this amendment only, yeah, reserve, banning those who are addicted. Not those who are dealing and trafficking these drugs. And I really would like to get to those people. I think that should be our priority. And if this wasn't a deterrent, I would be all for it. But I'm just, I've read all the studies before we reported this out of committee. And in every state, they recognize it is not a deterrent, and in fact, it's the opposite. When you don't give them food, it increases the recidivism. It makes it, they have the numbers, percentages, more likely for them to get back into prison. But most compelling for me is that luckily Guam, I mean, this is a federally paid benefit. So there's no burden on the people of Guam to extend this benefit. It's the opposite. If we do not extend it, we are going to be paying it like we are paying for it now. For everyone who is addicted, we are trying to put them through rehab, and we are paying for everything that goes along with it. Prison, we are paying for the food, everything. And if the studies show that giving them food might make them get a job, might help them, I mean, yes, you're correct. But they're, you know, they've been tested twice. Well, that is, that is what the courts are dealing with, and this amendment will not remedy the catch and release system at the courts. That's, this amendment doesn't do that. This doesn't do anything about their sentence and whether they should have been totally rehabilitated before they were released. It doesn't do anything about the risk when they were released. All of those have to be dealt with at the courts. They have to be solved in the prisons and the courts before release. This is a tool for the courts to say, and they ask for it, for reentry. They have a reentry program that says you need to get yourself on, you know, food. This, I'm sure, would help them to graduate those people out of those systems. And it's not going to save us a burden by denying them, despite them testing positive. And it's not going to get the people who I think we really should be getting. Rapists, murderers, We should solve that catch and release system. But most compelling for me is that TANF is only given to those people with children. So you deny TANF, you deny the children. In some cases, they can apply for just the children. But that decreases their overall amount that the family unit is entitled to. That's what we're talking about here. It's not necessarily rewarding those who are using. It's taking care of their families. And if they want to go out and use, and they are not, and they're derelict in taking care of their families, this is going to help all of us, their family, the remaining family, to take care of themselves, to take care of the children. And I say we have to address the real offenders another way. We can address the real offenders. But I don't want to address them by punishing their families, giving them less amounts, less cash, less food. I don't want to pretend like we're we're deterring them who are addicted from anything by denying them food. If we could do that, we would have stopped this epidemic a long time ago. That's the problem, is that we can't, and we are coming to realize that. All the states have realized that. And if they want to use it as a punishment, then they have made it specific. Traffickers, they said, will continue to be banned. Reoffenses of trafficking, crimes involving harm or killing, they will be forever banned. Those are punishments. Those are not deterrents, but they're punishments. So we're going to use it as a punishment. I just want to, I'm just want to put it on the record that I think there are other ways to, and people, to punish versus those we want to get into society, we want to get out of, into rehab, and we, and while they're in rehab, they're going to need food. I'm sorry, that's the facts of life, it feels to me, that you deny them food as addicts, you're complicating the situation as opposed to any chance of remedying it. So I'd just like to ask my colleagues, I mean, I totally hear everything that you've said. And I agree. Drugs, we got to get this out of Guam. We've got to take care of our customs. We've got to take care of our borders. We've got to shore up our port and stop the drugs from coming in. And we've got to go after traffickers and drug dealers like nobody's business. And we've got to make sure if we are relying on rehab, that that is reliable. And if we are relying on some kind of sentence that it's going to punish them and rehabilitate them and get them out, then it should be also reliable. But I just don't want to make it that we're going to deny their children more money or food for that family because the person is a drug addict. I don't want to reward him, but I just don't think denying him food is going to stop him. And denying his family's food, this is the crux of the situation. These people will continue to use the drugs even if you said your children will starve. That is the problem that we are facing. That is the nature of the beast. For those reasons, I just want to make food available. And I agree with all other sentiments. We want to punish them in another way. Let's punish them. We want to deter them. Let's really deter them. But let's for sure go after those, not just addicted users, but those who are committing crimes involving harm to people, those who are dealing these drugs. And let's do that with, you know, specific crafting in that regard. I want to thank my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the amendment, on the amendment, there has been an objection. Would you like to close, Senator Barnett? I mean, I'm sorry, Senator Fisher, would you like to close on the amendment?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. I just had to take a deep breath after that last speech. I frankly, I would just wonder whether or not the speaker who just sat down has even read Senator Parkinson's bill. This bill is not designed to punish people. What Senator Parkinson has done is bring forward a bill that would allow people who are addicted to drugs, who have been convicted, to actually get the benefits of TANF and SNAP. How that is characterized as punishment is a question for the ages, because I sure don't understand it. During that speech, I was looking for a coherent thread throughout it and could find none. Punishment, what are you talking about? We are punishing no one. We are giving them quite the opposite. We are giving them the opportunity to rejoin society and ask no more than they do what every person in this room does, which is obey the law. That is hardly punishment. And we are told that the amendment in this case is deficient because it doesn't do anything to stop drugs from coming in, but it does take a step at enforcing the prohibition on the use of crystal methamphetamine and any other drug that you want to talk about. You tell us that, what have we, well, I would ask the prior speaker, what have you done? We heard about customs. We heard about customs. Is there a bill on the floor right now to strengthen customs? We talk about immigration. Is there a bill on the floor right now to address immigration problems? Is there a bill right now on this floor to do something to strengthen the prohibition on the use of controlled substances? You know, this is a senatorial body. The people elected us to lead, and we are not leading, we are lagging. I would put to you that people on Guam right now are wondering whether or not we have lost our minds. The people on Guam want us to enforce our drug laws. They don't want us to weasel through the laws we try to pass to hollow them out. So, in fact, there is no enforcement. There is a reality that this body and our speakers need to understand there is an enemy at our gates. And we are not going to negotiate with the enemy. We're going to crush the enemy. And we're not going to do it by mollycoddling, hand-holding, and wringing our hands because an individual can't seem to obey the law. Again, the people of Guam who are watching this, which I would say is probably a sizable amount now that the electricity's come in back on, are sitting there wondering, senators, you don't really care about crystal methamphetamine. All you want to do is hold the hands of people who repeatedly break our laws. But no, we have been generous, and we have said, yes, you can have TANF benefits although you have violated these statutes. You can have SNAP benefits although you have violated these statutes. But we are requiring you one thing, stay off drugs. Quit feeding into the industry of crystal methamphetamine on this island. And then, we wring our hands again and say, oh, we're going after the users. We're not going after the dealers. Well, let me tell you something. The dealers don't need our assistance because they are raking in thousands of dollars from our people and don't have any trouble buying car lots or opening restaurants or showing up at athletic events and sitting around popping bottles of Cristal. They've got all the money in the world. Don't you worry about them. Now, we ask something very simple. We will allow you to have TANF. We will allow you to have SNAP benefits, but you must obey the law. I just want to reiterate. Senators, are we going to get serious about the crystal methamphetamine problem? Or are we just going to leave it on to the next generation? Are we just going to sit around and watch this island smolder and ruin because the enemy got through the gates and we did nothing to stop the enemy except to perhaps negotiate? Are we leading? Or are we lagging? Now, I'd like to congratulate Senator William Parkinson for bringing this bill forward because it is motivated by charity. No one can gainsay that. But it is charity that requires a good faith acceptance of that charity, which is, you will not continue to use drugs, and we will be merciful. We'll give you a chance, but if you have two consecutive problems here, you're out. You are out. You cannot share in these particular benefits. People need to understand that we're going to crush this enemy. We're not going to allow this enemy to destroy our island. We're not going to allow the enemy to destroy our families. We're not going to allow the enemy to destroy our institutions. We will be merciful, but we will extract justice. Thank you very much.
There has been an objection to the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. Amendment passes. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, I move to-
I'm sorry, Senator Parkinson. Let me give a moment, a chance to our colleagues. If anyone else would like to speak on the bill, who has not spoken on the bill yet. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move to place Bill Number 20-37-COR as amended on the floor, an act to restore federal assistance to otherwise eligible convicted drug offenders, and place it on the third reading file.
On the motion, are there any objections?
My colleagues, I am going to recess in a few minutes. However, I just want to make an announcement. So, tomorrow morning, we will be having a joint proclamation and and resolution presentation with the governor and the legislature here in our public hearing room. It is Guam War Survivors' Remembrance Day. It's a law passed by Senator Blas and others, of course, here in this body to remember our war survivors on June 28. So, it's an unusual year due to typhoon recovery, so we're not able to conduct all our normal events. But Senator Blas has requested the priests to recognize in all their masses the intention for our Guam War survivors. And we will, the governor will be issuing a proclamation to celebrate that day again as Guam War Survivors' Day, as is mandated by law. And we will also be presenting a resolution. We have asked that you invite any war survivors or any who are listening. Are welcome and invited to please join us 10:00 a.m. tomorrow in the Guam Public Hearing Room. Is there anything else, any other announcements? If not, then we will recess until 2:00 p.m. tomorrow.